Good evening, everyone. I call the meeting to order, City of University Heights City Council Meeting, April 12, 2022. The meeting is being conducted electronically by Zoom. There's quite a few guests here tonight, and so I want to get right to the meeting. All five council are present. Approval of minutes, March 8th and March 22nd. We'll do them together unless there's an addition or correction. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of March 8th or March 22nd? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Okay, we'll go on to public input, and I understand there is some public at the community center that want to speak.
Jan, just a minute, Jan's on mute.
Okay, I thought I did. No?
You're good, Jan.
I did. Okay, hi, I'm Jan Leff, and I'm on the committee that is in charge of the community foundation money for University Heights. And we met previously, and I think you got the report from Chris Luzzi, that we would like to plan an event for this coming summer, and the event would be an all-community picnic. And for those of you who attended about three years ago before COVID, I think you would all echo my sentiments, that it was a very successful event, and it did a great sense of building community. So we would like to do it again. We will need some assistance from the University Heights Council, either a person or persons who would be willing to work with us. We'll do the planning. But what we envision is that this would be an event that we would have at One University Way, would involve children. We already have musical acts that are willing to volunteer, and we have some funds so that we could do some food and make it a fun event for everyone in our community. So our purpose is to ask you if you would like to work with us in planning this event going forward.
You had, Chris Luzzi had submitted a report before the meeting, so because she did that, I will entertain council to talk about this, or if, I mean, some of the council might not be familiar with the Community Foundation Fund, and I don't know if they had enough time to look into that, but, or we could have discussion on the agenda for the May meeting. What would the, does the council have any reaction to discussing it tonight? Do you have enough background, or do you want to discuss it at the May meeting?
Is this the same event that it would have been on, was it the vacant lot down by Stella's?
Exactly, yes.
And, and we got the tea towel, the tea towels that said, "University Heights, It's More Than a Speed Trap"?
Yep, yes.
Those are great.
Well, Bobby, so you're a little familiar with the Community Foundation?
I'm not, yeah, I'm a little familiar with it. I mean, I remember the event that, that we did that she's referring to. That was, we were just brand new to the community, and that was one of the first things I think we attended.
I see. Would council like to do a little more research and talk about this at the May meeting, or do you want to talk about it more now?
I'm fine discussing it more now. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks. Can you, Jan, repeat, what, what were the, what were the asks again that you had for us in terms of committing, or, you know?
I think mostly we want assistance. We have a fund of about $2,500 from the Community Foundation of Johnson County, and so that is seed money that we could certainly work with. I think the flow of money is the consideration, and we would need some assistance with that.
So you're thinking the budget for this event is more like, more than 2,500?
I, we have not gotten that far in our planning.
I see.
I mean, it is seed money, and we've been in contact with a food source as well, and having it here at One University Way, we know that the developer of that community is definitely on board and is willing to shut off the parking lot for that day, or for several hours, not for the day. So, I mean, we've done a little preliminary work. I don't have any specifics as far as a budget, or what we really are planning specifically. So I think we would just like to have the go ahead and know that the council is behind us.
So you said the developer is on board with shutting down, what is that, does that include the homeowners association?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You said that the developer is on board with shutting down, but what about the homeowners association, which seemed like an important consideration?
I would assume that probably ensues as well, and I don't have that validation at this point. But the fact that the developer seemed really behind it and was kind of encouraging us led us to believe that he felt that it was a positive for the community here.
So does that mean shutting down cars from coming in and out of their, the south and the north buildings?
It might, but for a period of time, and, I mean, he certainly would be in charge of that factor as far as what he felt was appropriate and what was not. So we just like the idea that it's kind of central, and it's easy to get to, and most community members would have access to it.
I guess I'd like to know a little more information, but I'm interested in it, and I'm on board, but I'd want to know a little more details of, you know, like, say, traffic and, and like, say, any other asks, but I'd be willing to entertain it, but I, I don't know if I could commit to that tonight, but I, I can verbally say I'm behind it, but I'd just like a little bit more information, but I, I'm definitely interested.
Okay. So perhaps you would like me to, you or our committee, to gather more information specific to the traffic flow and the parking and?
Any impact, you know, any, anything that could be seen as, as a negative, or, lack of a better term, but anything that might interfere or interrupt, or anything like that, you know, just a timeline, and then maybe we can kind of work around that and kind of find out if it's an off-peak time, or anything like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that, Doug, and then, yeah, obviously, I just want to see if, I would want to be sure that it wouldn't throw off any of the tenants, you know, from their space, obviously.
Right, right.
And that would be, I would imagine, pretty easy to figure that one out, but, I mean, I like the idea of, of a community event. Obviously, financially, I don't know, you know, obviously, I don't know how, you know, how much you're thinking about, but that would obviously be an important part of it, and so.
Surely.
But it'd be, I don't know, it'd be cool to, if we could get donations and from people, maybe just, maybe it wouldn't cost much at all.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that you would like us to come back maybe in a month's time with more specifics about parking and the regulations of traffic flow and the finances.
Yeah, yeah, I would, and, and like, say, maybe have a Plan A and a Plan B, that, you know, we can, you know, like or dislike, or see if, you know, it will fit for everybody. So if you could come up with a Plan A, Plan B kind of thing, that'd be great.
Okay, all right, well, I think we can work on that, for sure.
Very good, very good, thank you.
Yes.
Jan, Jan, this is Steve Ballard, how are you?
Sure, I'm fine, thank you.
Good, good to see you. Yeah, so I would suggest that you check with the homeowners association, which I know you're going to. You might want to ask individual tenants, particularly commercial tenants that have the parking right there, you know, just to make sure that everybody's okay. The council's always been responsive to, you know, the people, you know, the nearby neighbors. I, obviously, I would talk to Chief Kelsey in terms of traffic and just the event generally. If there's, if there are particular requests for the council, like you said, you know, bring those back, and then, and then, once we, once we have that, I don't know that, that any of this would impact any of the city ordinances, but the council would be in a position to, you know, if we needed to grant, if the council wanted to grant a permit or needed to, we could, we could accomplish that as well. So I just thought I'd give you that little list.
Okay, we'll be happy to look into it.
Great.
Thank you, Jan, it's nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
Thank you, Jan.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the council tonight? Let's see, Katie's on the agenda. Do I see other people? Pat Yegi? Okay, I don't hear any other public input, so we'll go on. Now, before we go to the general obligation bond, Katie asked to be up at the front of the meeting with the Sidekick Coffee Liquor License. She's applying for a, as the owner of Sidekick Coffee and Books, for consideration of application for Class C liquor license. Mike, as clerk, will you explain what that is?
Sure. Iowa has Class A, B, and C, as well as D liquor licenses and some, some other, other variations between there. In University Heights, currently, we have three entities that have Class C liquor licenses. That would be Stella, that would be the rooftop at the Marriott, and that would be Maggie's Farm. And a Class C liquor license is for taverns, bars, and restaurants. It allows them to sell liquor, wine, and beer from the premises for consumption. It also, this is actually new and came from the legislature out of COVID, it allows carryout sales of liquor, wine, beer, and mixed drinks as well. That was a state change, okay? We also have one entity in town with a Class B liquor license, and that is the Courtyard Bistro at Marriott. And Class B liquor licenses are only available for hotels and motels. So what Katie is asking for is what we have given to our other establishments. I know when I talked to her, basically, this has come out of requests, and Katie, jump in any moment when I'm saying more than you want me to, that, that publishers for authors' readings, asking, you know, would they be, could we serve wine, could we serve, you know, something like that. So I don't think her, her intent is not to devote half her counter to sales or anything like that, but just, it's a, it's an amenity that would enhance events she would like to hold. Is that, is that a fair, fair summary, Katie?
Yes, it's come out of publishers asking for this capability for larger books that I have coming up in May, starting to put more people back on the road and doing in-person events with big book releases that did not happen for the last two years. And they're asking for wine, and, but I'm just starting small, and, you know, that's what it's, like, that's what I'm planning to do with it, and that's why this has come about.
Are there any other questions by council for Katie? She's here to answer any questions. Otherwise, could we have a motion for consideration of application for Class C liquor license by Sidekick Coffee and Books?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Lisa, second by Bobby, discussion. Roll call vote. No, it's not a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, okay, we'll go on. Thank you for waiting, everyone, because I promised Maggie Berger she'd be first, and, but we had a little bit of business. So Bobby, Steve Cool, and I met several times with Maggie Berger from Spear Financial to go over some numbers about a general obligation bond. And Maggie's here with numbers and bonding options, which was sent to the council a day or two ago. And welcome, Maggie, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it, everybody. I do know that you were forwarded the information, and I will try not to take a lot of your time this evening, but I will answer any questions that you have. In your packets, we start with a bond debt capacity. So I think that's very important, to always look at that. Your debt capacity of any city is 100, it's 5% of your 100% valuation. And so, as you can see, you have a debt limitation starting on July 1st for fiscal year '23 of $9,558,000. As you can see, we have listed the general obligation bonds that are outstanding for the city right now, and the principal amounts only. That's all it has to count against debt capacity is principal. We've got $1,165,000 of principal in this, again, as, as of July 1st, so after your June 1, 2022 payments are made. If we deduct that off of our $9.5 million number, you have remaining legal debt capacity of $8,393,000. We are not talking about you borrowing this amount of money, so I do want to say that I feel very confident in the amount of money that you're looking to borrow at this time. I also think that this gives you a very nice amount of money that you could borrow in the future if a bigger or larger project came up that you needed to borrow for. I don't think that you are in, by any means, betting up against your debt capacity or leaving yourself too short. We can then talk, I think, on next page, Mike, about the cost of projects that we're looking at. So what we have talked about is these four projects, or these four, I should say, four listings of projects, okay? Olive Court Reconstruction and Gulfview Avenue, we've made a parenthesis below that. Those are projects that have already been completed, and just depending on what we find in our records, those may be taxable, meaning that you may sell a tax-exempt bond and a taxable bond. It's pretty common that cities will have part of it taxable, part of it tax exempt. What we're looking for is any kind of knowledge in meeting minutes, or any kind of reference in meeting minutes that you intended to borrow money for those projects in the future, or anywhere that it was written down that you were intending to borrow money for those projects. That's a question that bond council will ask from the IRS perspective. Again, these two amounts are, for the city's portion, are not large amounts. It would be okay to do taxable. It just means that the taxable bonds might have a slightly higher interest rate than tax exempt. And I'll remind you, for those who maybe are new to the council, when you sell these municipal bonds as general obligation, if they are tax exempt, which most municipal bonds are, you would sell them in a fashion that the, that the investors will not pay federal income tax on the money that you pay them in interest. And so that's where the taxability question comes in, is if those are taxable, then those folks who, who invest will be paying federal income tax. Again, not a huge difference happened. We have taxable bonds all the time. There was then a list of fiscal year '23 projects that the council had identified, or your, your finance committee had identified, that totaled around $252,300 that we're looking to finance. And then, per our discussion, we did look at adding the Kosher Avenue project as well, which we think would be done in maybe fiscal year '23, or, and/or a combination fiscal year '23 and '24. The reason I'm suggesting that we would include this at this point in time is we have a rising interest rate market. We know this is a project that is, is likely scheduled to be done, and you do have, from the date that you receive the bond proceeds, you do have 24 months, per the IRS, to spend those bond proceeds. And so that, we thought, was an important aspect to possibly getting the money. You can invest the money that you get the bond proceeds, you just can invest them at a rate higher than the rate that you're paying on the interest at that time, but you could invest that money. It also, I do want to point out that all of the projects that are listed are essential corporate purpose, which means that they are interchangeable dollars. I think that we had this discussion in our last conversation, that we will hold a public hearing on purposes that indicate things like water, street, sewer, garbage, stormwater, curb and gutter, traffic signalization, sidewalks. So we don't ever call a project out by name in the state of Iowa for public hearing purposes. That just makes the money interchangeable, that if Kosher, for some reason, got pushed back and did not start, and some other projects came up, you would be able to spend money on that. I can let the finance committee speak a little more to this, but we thought about adding this project as a large project, and talking through some of the money that you have in cash on hand, as well as ARPA funds. We thought you could complete some of the other projects with those funds, and maybe not have to borrow another, a year in the future. The real, the real question as to why we don't want you to borrow now, and then maybe a year from now, is not only interest rates, but number five, six, and seven on this list, is there's cost of issuance that goes with every bond issue. So if we can lump them together over what we think we can spend in a two-year period, that is actually going to save you money. The estimated cost of issuance will be on the next page, but the underwriters discount, you'll recall, we offer when we do a competitive bond sale, we do offer a discount of eight tenths of 1%, meaning that the underwriter, or the investor who's buying these, can take what we would consider to be a sales commission out of the deal, because they're going to turn around and resell it, they've got some filing fees that go along with it. So on $1 million, they could, you know, $1,350,000, they could take about $8,200 out of the deal. Miscellaneous is just rounding. Bonds are sold in $5,000 increments. So are there any questions, or is there discussion that you want to have about those projects, before we kind of walk through the cost of issuance? Okay, so the next page is our cost of issuance breakdown, and what I can tell you is right at about $1 million, which we're talking about for this sizing, these are about the cost of issuance that you're going to pay, no matter if the size was $500,000 or $1 million. There's really sort of, kind of, $1 million is everyone's base fees, and then they start to go up after that. So Spears fee would be about $5,400. Again, that's for us to prepare documents, that's for us to have meetings, and, and again, market this security out in the market for people that would be interested. All bonds are sold electronically now on an auction website, so that's just a pass-through. We do have to prepare an official statement that does have a small amount of printing. We're able to, to reduce that, and that's really a disclosure document. That document talks about the city's finances, talks about taxable and actual valuation, talks about property tax rates, it talks about some demographic or census information, and it talks about the city's debt information. It's all the type of information that someone who's looking to feel your good credit would want to look at. We have copies, postage, mailing on there as well. Bond council, will this be, we have an estimate in here, and this, I think, would probably come down a little bit in size. Bond council is the Dorsey and Whitney firm we've used in the past. We would do all the financial paperwork, they would do all of the legal paperwork. The Securities and Exchange Commission, the SEC, has clearly drawn lines in the sand as to who does what, and then what actions each of us can undertake. Number nine, registrar and paying agent. So right now, on your municipally-held debt, not your bank loans, but your municipal debt, you have a registrar and paying agent, it's UMB Bank. That means you pay, one, your payment to just them, they turn around and distribute the proportionate share of those payments to any of the bondholders that are outstanding. So this is their setup in their first year. Then I believe you pay around $500 or $600 a year for that service, and, and we believe that's a very worthwhile service that they provide for that, that low cost. Again, we have the underwriters discount on here. If the underwriter does not take all of the eight tenths of 1%, that is just money that is back in the pocket of the council for the expenditure on the projects themselves. On the next page, I believe this is where we have provided you kind of an estimated debt service schedule. We had looked at $1,350,000 over 15 years. You can see, we've given you the principal, an estimated interest rate. I can tell you, interest rates are a little, but they're a little unsavory right now, but again, we're talking about interest rates that have not been in a, in a high, you know, rate environment in more than about 15 years at this point in time. So we anticipate that they're going to start to, to go up over the next few months with the Federal Reserve moving, but we also hope that if interest rates do start to rise, some of the inflation may fall, which will help stabilize those interest rates a little bit. On $1 million, or $1,350,000 over 15 years, your annual debt service payment would be right there in the middle of around $84,000 to $87,000 a year. We are talking about, and discussed this with the finance committee, that we thought you could use somewhere around $80,000 a year from your hotel motel tax. This would still allow for some of the projects that you're already paying hotel motel tax on, as well as some leftover dollars, per what the ballot, or, or per what the jurisdiction of that local, that hotel motel tax is. I don't disagree, we had a conversation, you likely could pay the full debt service payment with the hotel motel tax annually, but if, you know, we stuck to just the $80,000, there would be a minor amount of estimated debt service that could be paid with other sources of revenue, but it also could be paid, could be paid with, you know, options for cities are local option sales tax, maybe a road use tax, any other funds that you have, general fund, money, et cetera. If nothing else, then you would estimate that we'd have a debt service. On this amount, we're looking at a debt service on average of about 5 cents. So you'd be adding maybe four to seven cents to the debt service levy, again, if you chose not to pay it with any other sources of revenue. So that's just something to consider, and we did talk on our, our last conversation, that's a decision you as a council get to make each and every year when you're budgeting. General obligation debt states that you will levy the property taxes, unless you find other ways to abate the property taxes through your budget process. And that decision is not a decision you have to make right now. You can say, you could indicate that this is how you think you're going to pay that debt, but every year, the council does get to decide as you're working on that budget, and could move around funds from year to year, from project to project. Are there any questions on this debt service schedule? Okay, so going on to our next page of the packet, what we sort of laid out for you would be the fastest way that we could start this process. If the council tonight wanted to go forward with this, we could have you set a date of public hearing by holding a special meeting on April 26. That meeting definitely could be done via Zoom. It would only be one resolution, setting a date of public hearing. There, there's an action that actually has to be taken, and then from that date that gets set for May 10th, which would be your next normal meeting, we would be able to hold the public hearing at that meeting. From the April 26 meeting, the bond council documents that come out would include information in them for you to send to the newspaper. Because all of these are essential corporate purpose, meaning they're essential to running the city, you would be able to, only have a four and 20-day publication notice, meaning that it wouldn't take very many days in the newspaper prior to that public hearing, which is why we're using April 26th and May 10th. If you did not want to start that process at this, you know, at a special meeting, you could easily start it on May 10th. you could easily start it on May tenth and then decide to have a special meeting or just regular meetings. That truly is up to you at that point in time. These steps that we've then outlined um for the rest of it, um, these are all steps that after the public hearing need to um take, uh, they need each of their own dates. So there may be some special meetings that we're requesting. But each of them needs a date and they each need to be about two weeks apart. So from the date of the public hearing, we need to approve the official statements, which needs to be no less than two weeks later. And then from the approval of the official statement, no less than two weeks later can we have the bond sale. And then no less for the authorizing and issu- issuances two weeks and then bond closing about two weeks. So ultimately, what we're saying here is is we're looking at about a forty five to sixty day um window when we start talking through everything kind of in a two week increment. That is the fastest or the soonest that we can make all of this happen. We definitely can slow that process down um and wait and make decisions like you, the council, make decisions. Um, and and that's fine as well. We don't have any problems with that. Um, but we wanted to just sort of outline what all those steps would need to be for action. I don't believe there was anything else in our questions. I would be happy to answer them. Um, you may have questions for the finance committee based on our discussion. So.
And Maggie, I want to ask a question about when we talked about these right thing. We're talking.
And they probably are one to two resolutions at each meeting, and they very well are going to be ten to fifteen minutes. Um, I should note that the last date on the calendar for it says bond closing, there is no meeting requirement. We put that right in parentheses under. That is just the date that you receive the money. So there's no actual action that happens on that date. It is just the date that you receive the funds into your bank account, the date that you can start to spend those funds or reimburse yourself. As we stated, um, there is a spend down requirement. It is approximately twenty four months um through the IRS. Um, the IRS issuance guidance.
And did you say it'll take three to four months after this process to obtain the funding?
Um, we're probably, I would say, at least probably forty five to sixty days because again, if we count everything off in two week blocks and we start at the end of April. Uh, yes, we're probably, I would say, somewhere in that's maybe even sixty to ninety day range at this point in time.
And what I told Maggie was we usually block Tuesdays for these meetings. But that doesn't mean we have to choose Tuesday. It's up to the what's works for the council schedule. Uh, that's what we did with the previous council, but we could change that also.
Right.
Um, are there any questions about this process?
If I can say one more thing, we would recommend that you would sell on a competitive basis, meaning that we would put it out there in the market to everyone, uh, and anyone who's a qualified bidder. That could be some of your local institution that may just be underwriters who are picking up some of your local institution. We had a bond sale yesterday um for a a community college. It was a ten year bond sale. So it was a little bit less than this one. Um, we had eight bidders on that, and that really shows you where the market is because you've got that competition of everyone. We say sharpening their pencil and giving you the best interest rate. By state law on a competitive sale, you are required to take the lowest interest rate um or reject all of the bids. And so um, we truly believe that competitive markets um in Iowa, especially for generalized way and will offering the lowest cost financing.
Okay, comments? Uh, Bobby, did you want to comment at all?
Uh, I mean, I think.
You worked hard on this.
Well, yeah, I don't know how hard I worked compared to Maggie, that's for sure. But um, uh, yeah, I mean, just to summarize what Maggie said, basically, you know, rates are going up. The longer we wait, it seems in this environment, the the more it costs. Um, and so, I mean, just that alone is is an important factor to consider. We, as a city, have a, you know, we can take a lot more debt than what we're even, you know, approaching than the amount that we're even approaching now. So from that standpoint, it's not a huge concern. We're not, you know, we're not, we're not cutting it close or over leveraging ourselves, I guess. And so, yeah, I don't know. That's just to reinforce everything you already said, Maggie.
And that's why I had said to the council, we'd have some options, but based on interest rates rising, we kind of took out the options and and went with, we better include uh everything.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Uh, so um if council decides to move forward with this, start the process, then you would be contacting John Dano. So do we have our city attorney contact him? How does that work, Maggie?
Yep. So we would be the ones that would be contacting Mr. Dano. So you just have to let us know when you're ready to start that process. We need to give them at least a week's notice. So if we're talking about April twenty sixth, you know, that could maybe you guys get us consensus, you know, by the end of this week or early part of next week. But they do like to have at least a week's notice to get you documents out. Also, that helps it, um, uh, you know, for your council agenda requirements, whatever they may be. So we would provide them the dates. Um, if you say, you know, we're interested in, you know, these dates going forward, that's what we would do. And then we would start to fill in the dates and and represent that probably to your finance committee so that they could bring it to you and say, do will the rest of these dates work um for you guys to have maybe some special meetings along with your regular meetings?
Okay, so Steve, we didn't talk about this, but I just thought we needed a general consensus from council about moving forward. Is that right? As far as, or did you want to motion or, you know, just a general consensus? We don't really have a.
And I think, excuse me, yeah, I think as long as that's what we're talking about as a consensus to then to then adopt a resolution uh to set a hearing as Maggie outlined. I don't think you need to do anything more than kind of give give a thumbs up tonight.
Okay. So council want to give a thumbs up or thumbs down? Hey, there's one. There's two. Uh, yeah, three.
All right.
Four.
We got five thumbs up.
There you go. Okay. We do that at some meetings. I just thought, what the heck? Um, okay, so uh, I like how you call us the finance committee, finance committee of of many people, our finance director, our finance committee, our finance, everybody. Okay, so Maggie, you have some direction, so that's good.
Would you like me to use the April twenty sixth date or would you like to start that process on May tenth at your regular meeting? So you could have a little bit more time to discuss. That's up to you.
I kind of would like to go with April twenty sixth. What are you thinking, uh, Bobby?
Yeah, I think April twenty sixth is great.
Okay, then we will go go ahead and get those dates, those first two dates off to bond counsel. We will copy you in, um, Bobby and Mayor, we will copy you in on that just so that they know. We'll also copy Mike in because Mike will be the one getting the proceedings from them as well. Um, so we'll get those, that request off to them and then we'll present um uh to you um a filled in dates and and to make sure that you can come back and bring those to the council to make sure those dates work. Um, so they can look ahead on their calendars and and we'll fill in the rest of those dates. All right?
Thank you so much, Maggie.
Thank you for.
I have one quick question for you, Maggie. Um, did you say that it's there's a four day publication instead of a ten day on this? Okay, good.
Yes, yes, it's an essential, yeah, you're, yeah, good question. It is an essential corporate purpose, so it will be no less than four days, no more than twenty days prior.
Got it.
Um, because these projects are essential, even if they are deemed to be taxable, there is still some um essential pieces there. So, all right?
Great.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Maggie.
Right, Maggie.
Uh, okay, uh, we're going to go on to a discussion of of um hotel motel tax revenue. And Bobby, you were gonna start that discussion about uh CBB and tax.
Oh, that's right. Um, excuse me, yeah, I met with Josh and Maggie, no, not Maggie, sorry. It was uh Molly, is it from the hotel? And just.
Oh, Michelle. Was it Michelle?
I don't think so, but it doesn't matter.
Kelly, Kelly.
There it is, Kelly.
Kelly, Kelly Murphy?
Yes, it was Kelly.
Cause I don't think there's a Molly over there.
Not Molly.
I just went with an M name. Okay.
Yeah, and um, yeah, I think the bottom line, I guess, from my perspective is, you know, the hotel definitely right now really needs to be a part of it. Um, it's, it's a situation where it's very disadvantageous for the hotel to not be a part of that group. And so if we were, if we were to, if we were to step out of that or not contribute in some way, then that would really hurt them, at least as they're getting started for certain. Um, the, the, it's a unique thing just for us because the portion that we would be contributing is such a large part of our, it's such a large percentage of our annual budget. And so um, they understand that, but um, and I think, you know, they said basically, I don't know what the final decision on this was from their standpoint, but they would be, you know, willing to kind of, you know, let us in at a reduced rate initially, just because we have um, we have other expenses and things that we're trying to pay for. And and it is such a big percentage of our budget, but um, that's what they talked about. He, Josh, the last I left it, he had, he needed to go back and talk to them, the rest of the, you know, municipalities. But that was that, I guess. Anything else, Louise, that you?
No, I thought that was uh a nice compromise to uh suggest to you that we come in at, he said ten to fifteen thousand, and he said whatever your budget can do for the first year starting July, but it has to go through the, the board members, of course. But he uh, what he does understand uh the uniqueness of University Heights now and that that would give more time to uh the city to plan for July first, twenty twenty three, when we'd go to a twenty five percent. So I want to encourage everyone to call Josh to talk to him. He'll meet with you at the city office at your, wherever you want to meet with him, or you can go to the CBB or talk on the phone. And um, and then uh, we need to vote on this either May or June. He also would be glad to come back to a meeting and talk again. Uh, he'll uh do whatever council wants. And so uh, uh, I'm not sure how everyone feels, but we could put it on the agenda as a decision next month and then we could defer it if people aren't ready or.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm certainly fine with that. In my mind, it's a no brainer, I guess. And so I don't, I guess personally don't see any reason to delay the decision, I guess. But I'm fine with taking as long as everyone needs to feel comfortable with it, you know? The hotel really needs it. This is a really critical time for them to get up and get running. And so um, it would be a really bad thing if they didn't, you know, if they were excluded, you know, from from that group right off, right out of the gate. Um, and and I think frankly, what the CBB does is incredible. So it's really, it's pretty awesome what they, you know, provide for our, what they bring to to town, so.
Any other comments or? I'll go ahead and uh have Steve put a, a decision, a resolution on the May agenda and we'll see where we are then. Okay. Thank you. Um, okay, now, um, we have the visitor here uh from Aztec. V's here tonight with the presentation. And I had said to them, you can come at eight o'clock so they wouldn't have to sit around. But since she's already here, let's uh go ahead and have her speak. And I did uh have Mike send the presentation around so they could re, council could review. And uh, so be welcome to the meeting tonight. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank you for for having me. And, you know, I've just been listening and uh doing a bit of catching up on my own work too. So no, no love lost there. Um, but yeah, thank you for having me. I um, I can definitely share my screen for the presentation. I can also talk to you, so.
That'd be fine. You should be able to, you should be able to share.
Perfect. Okay. Oh, yeah, there we go. Perfect. All right. Can, uh, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, great. I can't see anybody. So if you have a question, just unmute yourself um and uh speak into the space. Um, yeah, so my name is V Fixmore O'Rice and I'm the CEO and founder of Aztec Planning. And we're actually a planning firm located here in Iowa and nearby in Iowa City. And uh, we are working on this inclusive economic development plan in Johnson County. Uh, we started conversations with Iowa City Area Development Group and the Business Partnership about a year ago, actually, on this, um, in conjunction with some work that we were doing with a multicultural development center of Iowa. And uh, just realized that, you know, um, there was a lot of talk about and and the county actually does have its own economic development plan. And this work is actually to kind of add on to that uh work that they did. So um, wanted to point that out. And uh, but really trying to get an understanding of what, what we call underestimated community members. So those would be your BIPOC community members, people with disabilities, women, people from the LGBTQ plus community. What, and what are some of the barriers and opportunities that people are facing when trying to start a business, uh, maintaining a business and or maintaining a business? And then, you know, what are some of the um tools and programs that are available to them? So this is also funded by Green State Credit Union and uh, we're grateful to do this work. So I'm just going to give you kind of a rundown of the project, the planning process, uh, our outreach and engagement, and then some next steps, and of course, our our ask at the end there. So some highlights about the project, you know, we've um, we did some initial research, identified over twenty five economic development plans and racial equity plans. We realized that, you know, this plan is a little bit different than just one or the other. We're really trying to meld the two to, um, like I said, kind of identify those barriers uh that may be um occurring and also link to some of those opportunities. So we wanted to kind of get a sense of what what's out there already. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. And so we looked at a lot of plans at every level, county, city, state. And then we kind of took the best of the best. So we wanted to do a survey. We need to get some data, um, and especially trying to understand, you know, what are COVID related impacts? And what are just impacts that people were feeling beforehand? Uh, so we wanted to make sure that we were asking, you know, those kind of direct questions. Um, and then also making sure that that is a very accessible survey. So we have it actually translated into four languages. It's um in Spanish, French, Arabic and Mandarin. And so trying to make that accessible. Um, and the questions are really aimed at, you know, what are the resources that you know of? Or how are you accessing capital, uh, those types of questions? And then we also wanted to make sure that we gave people an opportunity to provide um their stories and to be able to sort of directly engage in a group setting. So we've been hosting focus groups and uh we worked with Angie Jordan of Banjo Knits Empowerment um to do some, and then we've also done some of our own. And we're really looking at focusing on groups, like I said, from those underestimated community members. So um, we were working with the Center for Worker Justice. Um, we have a Latina um group of entrepreneurs that we also hosted a focus group with. Um, and so, you know, trying to kind of bring those folks together. Uh, and then also one-on-one interviews. We want to make sure that uh we're, you know, kind of gathering the stories, uh, letting people kind of tell their own experiences and their own words, um, making sure that that's a real like human centered approach. Um, and then it'll actually culminate in some strategic doing sessions. So if you're um not familiar with strategic. If you're, um, not familiar with strategic doing, it's really about gathering people in one space and, um. You know, bringing together, uh, people from kind of different areas. And, uh, that would be kind of like city folks like yourself, and then maybe some. People from lending institutions, ICAD, and then, of course, you know, potential business, um, people or people who own their own businesses. And then trying to understand what are some of the new pathways that we can create? Based on a lot of the information that we would have gathered and analyzed. What are the assets in the room and the, and the ways that we can kind of, you know, pivot, um, based on. The people and the resources that are in the room, so it's a pretty cool process, um, a certified strategic doing planner. As is Angie Jordan, so we'll be hosting those sessions and inviting you to those. Uh, just to give a timeline, so we started that research back in November. Uh, we started the surveys in February, and actually the, uh, survey will close April twenty-second. And then the focus groups have been ongoing, um, I'll get into that a little bit more here, but we have a couple more. Uh, coming up the, yeah, this month, and then the strategic doing sessions, uh, hopefully we can get those in May. And then kind of wrapping things up this summer and June or July. To give you a sense of the focus groups that we've been working with, um, like I said. We're really focusing on groups that are underestimated or under-resourced, so. You see the Colectivo de Mujeres Negocios, that is, um, a group of, uh, Latina women who are entrepreneurs. And, um, are, you know, starting their own businesses and really it's kind of a support group that already existed, and so we just. Were able to invite them to another, uh, group and I get their input, and that. Focus group happened all in Spanish and, um, we had an interpreter and a facilitator. So, um, really dynamic experience, um, and wanting to make sure that people feel comfortable. To provide authentic information and, um, and, and honest feedback, so. We also have, um, the Center for Worker Justice, like I mentioned, and then we've also engaged, um. Vendors from the diversity markets, so, um, have been really. Fortunate to have such a just robust, uh, community, uh, but there are so many different types of. Groups and people that are coming together to really make their dreams happen, um, as a small business owner, I know what it's like. To think about how daunting it is to start a small business, and, um, so it's been very, uh. Just a really incredible experience to listen to these people's stories and, and what they're doing. Um, we wanted to make sure that this was also accessible, so we offered, um, as you see, a five hundred dollars stipend to the organization. Organization that was leading it, such as, um, you know, the Center for Worker Justice. And then we also provided food and childcare and transportation. Um, this plan must be accessible even throughout the planning process. Um, as you can imagine, um, just making sure that people are resourced. Um, we have done, uh, quite a few interviews, actually, I think we're up to five or six at this point. And, uh, the outreach, you know, it's, uh, these things kind of happen word of mouth. Um, we did reach out to ICAD and the Business Partnership and also use, use the T S B directory. Um, and the Grow Blackout Story Map from the University of Iowa to kind of identify. Uh, leaders in the, in the community and see if we, they would be willing to share their stories. Um, you can see we've done quite a bit of outreach and, um, they're kind of in the dark oranges, University Heights, so that's actually one of our asks is. Um, hopefully to see if you could connect us with, uh, some folks who might be willing to, uh, share their story. We, we think it's really important to have these interviews because. Again, we want to make sure that there's a human-centered approach and. As humans, it's really, it's about the stories. We'll have the data, um, and that's really important, of course. Uh, but then also, how do we connect to these things and, and make, you know, changes happen, and, and typically that's done through storytelling. Just to give an update as to where we're at with the survey responses and the distribution, so. Like I said, we launched it in February, we've kind of done outreach to all the city governments and the county. Um, and the lending institutions, and then over a hundred of, of the businesses. Themselves, and, and that actually is door to door, so we've. Realized that, you know, people are busy, especially if you're underestimated or underrepresented, you. May have multiple businesses or you may be kind of juggling a lot of things at the same time, so we've gone door to door, we've also called people. Um, and made sure that we have kind of language-appropriate people helping us. For the survey, we've had about forty-one responses. And we've wanted to also incentivize this because we realize it, it takes folks a minute to kind of fill it out, so. We're offering five one-hundred-dollar cash practices that we'll randomly select, um. At the end of the survey, which is April twenty-second. It's been really great, we've had, uh, response rate, um. Like I said, it's even higher than we had anticipated. We thought we would be great if we got thirty-six responses, honestly. Um, just kind of looking at the percentages. But seventy-three percent you can see are business owners and then the rest of the thirty percent are support institutions. And it's just as important that we're getting that information from the support institutions, because those questions are really geared at. You know, what types of programs, um, are you offering? Are you lending, um, to folks through grants? Um, and that's, you know, cities and the county, as well as the lending institution, so that survey is also really important. Um, on our website, we also have an opportunity, not only to get information about. This planning process, but also to share stories, and so people have anonymously submitted stories. Um, and you may have read this because you had this ahead of time, but, um, I'll read one of them, so. I'm a general contractor who has worked here in the Eastern Iowa corridor for well over twenty years. I have not received any help or support from any banks or financial institutions in this area. No one will give me a loan and probably never will. So I think, you know, these kinds of stories sort of strike a chord, um, and set a tone. And I think kind of give insight into some of the frustration or maybe mistrust that people have. Um, with lending institutions or other organizations. Um, but you know, that's, it's important that we continue to put, um, you know, kind of people's stories out there, so. Um, our next steps are to kind of continue doing this. University Heights is, um, you know, kind of our. One of our few, last few cities that we are doing outreach to specifically, um, to city council, um, and. Really, we're doing that because, uh, first of all, we need help. Kind of getting the word out about the surveys, um, and also you are community leaders, so you may know some, um, individuals that we can be reaching out to. Uh, we'll still conduct some more interviews here and then, uh, we'll be wrapping up our focus groups. And of course, continuing our collaborations with our project partners. Um, we thought it'd be maybe nice or easy to share with the Q R code. Uh, those are still in fashion, as far as I know, um, and then if you'd like to take the survey, you can go to our website and there's a tab actually called. Um, I think it's economic, and you can click on that and there's a lot of information there. You can share your story there, there's a link to it. And then, uh, my colleague is Mita, is the one who's kind of running point for a lot of the distributing information, so. Um, definitely feel free to reach out there, her email is there. And really, that's kind of my full, um, presentation. Uh, I can stop, check screens, I can see your faces here. Um, but I would, I would love to entertain any questions, um. Or, or comments.
So you want all of, you want, uh, the staff and council and residents to look at the survey? Or do the survey?
The survey is really intended for underestimated, uh, community members who would like to open a business or, or currently. Or currently have a business, so, uh, women in business, uh, BIPOC-owned business, person with disability. Um, LGBTQ plus, the city actually would be great to take that, um. Because maybe there are programs that you have for, for small businesses or something, um. And so it would be good to know kind of how you're supporting the businesses in your town. Um, and so that would be great, and then if you know of anybody. To pass along the survey or, or connect us and we can, you know, kind of talk with them, interview if they were open to it, but. Really looking to city councillors as, as leaders of the community to, to help us kind of connect with some folks.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For the presentation and, um. You can re, and you can keep reaching out to me for any follow-up, okay?
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, now we'll go on to, let's stay up here under Mayor's Report and Discussion of American. Rescue Plan for ARPA Funding and, um. That's, you know, what it is, it's the American Rescue Plan Act and, uh, University Heights. Uh, applied for it and we received by our population count a hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred some dollars. Uh, that's what the total will be. We have received so far half of that, which is seventy-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. Approximately, and the second half we should get probably in the fall, so. Steve Cool, Bobby and I, when we were working on the city budget F Y twenty-three. Steve Cool has been working on the budget for, I think this is his thirty-ninth year. And so he has a good grasp of the budget, so, uh. We, uh, were looking on it, working on it, and Steve went through very carefully. To see if there were any losses that we could claim for, uh, using this funding. And he told us the only loss was in the police. And that loss was covered by Chief Troy. Applying for CARES funding and also, um. Uh, chief, uh, lined up contracted work to keep from any. For the police to keep from any significant losses, and so we're grateful for Chief for doing that. And so Bobby and I and Steve talked about. Uh, for the, since COVID began, the city has heard from several small business owners. And, um. They were asking, inquiring if there was any kind of funding for small businesses during this pandemic. And they were asking, several of them mentioned that Iowa City was doing some. Was helping small businesses, and so Bobby and I. Are suggesting to the council, would you want to consider? Uh, uh, using this money for small businesses. Uh, for help during COVID and, uh, so I don't know if you want to add anything, Bobby, but.
No.
Summarizes it, like, we were thinking, uh, that's where we've gotten requests from, or s- several small businesses. And, uh. Uh, there's a process that we should go through and, and be fair and open to all small businesses and, and. And we can talk about that.
Yeah, that, that's my, yeah, that's great, Louise, I think that's right on my thing, I just to reiterate that, I think the, the goal with the funds is to. Is to kind of help the businesses that were directly impacted by COVID lockdowns and shutdowns, so. In my mind, it's businesses that had to close doors, they're, you know, just, uh, you know. You know?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud here, you know, sidekick, I mean, I'm not making any decisions, but this is just me thinking out loud of the types of businesses that were directly impacted. It'd be sidekicks, it'd be bar, uh, fitness, it would be Maggie's, it would be Stella's. You know, that type of businesses that really couldn't do any business because of the shutdown. And so, and I'm thinking, I mean, we've talked about putting together some type of. Whether it's a Google form or some type of application that, that business owners can fill out on a website. Or, or just a PDF that they can fill out and submit, and then we can kind of go from there as far as. Distributing funds.
I, uh, contacted, uh, about five cities in Johnson County, uh. Uh, their, um, city administrator or manager asking if they used any. Funds of any kind for small businesses, and the only one I found was a city of Iowa City. And, uh. I, I was able to get some forms from them that we could look at. And, uh, they said, we're be glad to show this to you, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel and. And see if this will help you, and so that's where we are now.
Yeah, what's, what's next and what do we need to do next in the process to, just to keep the ball rolling, Louise?
Well, I think council. If they, I think we ought to have a ad hoc committee, a subcommittee. Of a couple council members, maybe a couple staff members, Mike, the clerk for sure. And, uh, maybe a consultant of Steve Ballard to overlook it when the, you know. Pick and choose the form and how it's done, because, uh, we have to look at, I mean, some of these businesses have gotten PPP money. And we need them to explain if they're still. Have, you know, holes and need some assistance, you know, so I think it would be good to get, uh. Uh, some members of council to help serve on this. And look at, look at building a form, is that what you're thinking, Bobby? I think you suggested that and I talked. And Tim's. Tim talked to me about that also.
Yeah, I'm happy to help if, if, if that's the next step. We can, we can, I guess I can work with whoever else wants to, and, and then Steve Ballard, and we can just kind of come up with some, something to. Maybe to vote on or approve at the next council meeting, is that kind of the thinking? Or is that too?
Before that's far along, I don't know, you know, we can see, I mean, it depends on schedules and things, but. You know, uh, maybe we'd be far enough along, a lot of. Councils haven't made decisions yet, so it's not like we're behind. And so, yeah, ideally, the sooner the better, I think, would be good for the small businesses.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm happy to help.
Great. Does anyone else have some time that could help or have an interest in?
I could step up, I'd help.
No.
Okay, Steph, thanks, and, uh, we'll, we'll see, I mean. I could help also, but could Mike, can you help with this?
Sure.
As Steph?
Yeah.
I mean. Yeah, so is, is that sound agreeable to council? Uh, to move forward like this? I've heard from Tim and Bobby and Steph.
It's good, but did, I mean, Tim was kind of the. He looked like he had unmuted and was gonna say something.
Okay, well, I didn't mean.
That's fine, I got plenty of stuff to do and.
Take it.
No, um, no, that's fine, duh, or I can help if you need it, but I was just curious about how you. Many people put something down on a form, but do you need to get their tax? Forms for the last couple of years and kind of review what they actually got?
That's, that's a great question, I don't, I think some of that is what we need to determine, really. What's, I mean, because my guess is Steve Ballard, it's gonna have a lot of. I'm just thinking out loud, a lot of legal implications and compliance things about equi, you know, equitable and all that, you know, so I don't know. It could be a complicated, um, endeavor, frankly.
Yeah, I think we'll need to look at, it's nice that Iowa City was, was willing to share, uh, its forms and. As, as the phrase, not to, to reinvent the wheel, you know, when the city, uh, is the conduit for these kinds of, of funding. Opportunities, resources, the city has pretty considerable, uh, discretion and ability to ask. Applicants for the kinds of information that, you know, kind of raises an eyebrow, gee, can we ask them for this or that? So I feel pretty comfortable that the council, once we have a, an opportunity to kind of get our head around. What we want to do in terms of making funding available and how. Particularly with the Iowa City forums as a starting point, uh, I think we'll be able to come up with, with, uh. Things to talk about as, for you to talk about as a council and say, yeah, let's focus on this or ask them about that, or no, that's not really important to us. I think you'll have flexibility, Tim.
Okay, um, so I'm hearing that's agreeable by the majority of council, in fact, it's probably unanimous, Doug, I didn't hear you.
Well, I was wondering, maybe we should just make it a workshop or something where all of us participate.
I think that might be one of those too many cooks kind of a thing, but.
I'll be willing to step out of the kitchen if that's what it takes. I'll go sit on the couch.
Well, how about we go ahead and see how that works? And how the, the small group works? And I'm not, you know, and we'll go from there. That's agreeable.
Do we, let me ask this. If we kind of on the, on the, you know, between myself and Stephanie or whoever it would be, if we kind of come to a pretty clear consensus on what the form needs to be, do we need to have it approved at a council meeting before we, you know, submit it or just put it out there for the business owners? You know what I mean?
I think we, well, what do you think, Steve?
Well, it's a fair question. I mean, the form, you know, it's what's, it's the, it's the values and the decisions that might be kind of baked into the form. I mean, the council needs to decide, okay, this is, this is how we would like to see these funds distributed. And if, if, you know, and if the council makes those sort of big picture decisions, I think, I think the council can delegate to a committee or to staff or both, you know, put, put a form together and get it out there. But I, I don't think the form can sort of be drafted without the council's okay, in the absence of the council deciding how the funds are going to be distributed, if that makes sense, Bobby.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking any sort of decision on distributing, but just getting the information out there and collecting the responses so that we could keep it moving. But yeah, I think that's probably, that's probably the right way to do it, is to have an approval on the form next time or whatever, and then, and then go from there.
Can, can I ask you, it's probably an unrelated and probably a dumb question, but in regards to any COVID, was there anything, Troy, was there any of our police officers that due to COVID lost any hours? Or was everybody pretty much covered with sick pay? I mean, was there any lost income on the PD side of things? I'm just trying to think of any other COVID relief that we could maybe provide other than small businesses.
No officer suffered financially. The officers who were out because of COVID were out on sick time. We did incur some backfill expenses, but that was covered in theory by the, the CARE submission and the percentage they allowed us.
Okay, good. I, I just wanted to make sure we weren't overseeing anything or forgetting and, just trying to keep eyes on everybody and everything, just make sure we're not losing someplace that we could help.
Appreciate it.
That's a good question, Doug, because when we get the second half of the seventy-six thousand, we have, according to the president, we have until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to make, to use these funds. And so if there's something that we find from the city that we suffered and can show, we could maybe use some of those funds at the time.
Okay.
And make a decision with those funds.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, it is. And so, well, we'll go ahead with that. Or the small businesses. And Mike, will you send, would you start sending out things so we can come up with some times when people can maybe attend? Would you, could you help with that?
Yep, absolutely. Will do.
Thank you very much.
I was gonna ask if you could look at the forms on the twenty-sixth or something, if you're already gonna be meeting.
Oh, yeah, that would be a good idea. We could put that on the agenda to look at the forms on the twenty-sixth, see where, where everybody is. That's a good suggestion. Thanks, Tim. Maybe that'll get us going too, you know, moving a little quicker for everyone. Any other comments, suggestions?
Yeah, Louise, this is Steve, just.
Oh, Steve Cool.
Yeah.
Looking at Steve, okay.
Yeah, you were correct about the date, December thirty-one of twenty twenty-four. Any, any events or situations that would occur up through that date are coverable by these funds. I believe the actual expenditure of the funds has to be completed by December thirty-one of twenty twenty-six.
Oh, oh, so we have until the end of December twenty twenty-four. Okay, but that's not the deadline. Okay, very good.
Right, because some, some communities are doing some construction projects and as long as they, you know, have the contracts all in place and everything and substantially, you know, complete those projects or have them underway by then. They, they do have until December of twenty twenty-six to actually spend all the money. So we still have, we still have a little over two years, you know, of other possible things to cover yet.
So Steve, I didn't realize you were still on. Thanks for hanging on. So is this your thirty-ninth year or your fortieth year?
Not quite that long, maybe thirty-three.
Oh, I thought you, oh, oh, only thirty-three. Okay.
Yeah, only.
I'm sorry. Okay, only thirty-three years he's been with the city. Okay. Thanks, Steve. Okay, and now if there's no other comments, we'll move on to, let's see, we're all over the, we'll go to the city attorney's legal report. Steve, you have a couple things to take care of with seats and transit.
Right, it's that time of year where we renew our twenty-eighty agreements with Johnson County for the provision of seats services. The, the seat service rate has changed over the years. We played, we paid a flat rate for quite a while. And, and then seats came to us and said, you know, no more than, than your residents are using a seat service, you're, you're better off to pay a per ride rate. And, and that saved the city, frankly, thousands of dollars. And so the, the per ride rate for the last few years has been twenty-five dollars. And this year it increased to thirty inflation, you know, obviously, a motor vehicle fleet, gas prices, so forth. So, twenty-two oh six is the renewal of the, of the seats agreement with, with Johnson County for FY twenty twenty-three. So that's obviously twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three at a rate of thirty dollars per ride. That's twenty-two oh six.
Okay, is there a motion? Okay, Bobby raised his hand for resolution twenty-two oh six. And Steph, that was you, right?
Yep.
Was the second discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Gun.
Hi.
More.
Hi.
Schroder.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Swales.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And then you have, go ahead, Steve, I'm sorry.
No, sure. So then, then the next resolution is twenty-two oh seven. And, and so seats is, is, you know, paratransit or accessible transit, twenty-two oh seven is for, for what's called the, you know, Iowa City Transit, you know, the bus service. So this is a twenty-eighty agreement between the city of University Heights and the city of Iowa City, you know, to stop and, and, you know, accept riders at the locations in University Heights where, where the bus stops are. The contract price is forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars a year. It's an increase of twenty-two hundred thirty-eight over the prior year. It's, you know, that's five point two percent, which I think is, is roughly a CPI calculation, maybe a little below CPI, depending on, I guess, when you calculate it. But that's, that's the, that's the rate and the, the resolution. So twenty-two oh seven is the renewal of the twenty-eighty agreement with the city of Iowa City for transit services.
Is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by, was that Bobby? I'm sorry. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Doug? Okay, discussion. Roll call vote.
More.
Hi.
Schroder.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Swales.
Hi.
Gunn.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
Hey, thank you. And Steve, you have one more. I guess you could start. Other people have been working on it, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. Perhaps Steph or Bobby would like to discuss the, the renewal. I can certainly speak to the contract terms, but and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Steph, I guess I didn't.
No, no, absolutely, no.
If you want to go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
I, I just think that we've got an excellent opportunity here to renew the chief's contract. And he's gone over the terms and I think he's amicable with things. And I think as long as we can keep him, we're wanting to keep him on board, but I think that he's comfortable with, with what you've drawn up in the contract for now. And I, I, I don't know, do we need to even discuss it? Or can we just motion that we are gonna?
Well, you can make the motion of that resolution and then we'll have discussion at the appropriate time.
Okay, I'll motion.
Okay, for resolution twenty-two oh eight. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tim. And discussion.
I think we'll have to throw it back on board. What a phenomenal two years it's been in light of what it could have been.
Great. You took it right out of my mouth. Thank you, Bobby. Yes, yes.
Troy, I didn't hear what you said. You were muted, by the way.
I, I was just gonna say, we're thrilled. And you said that. I was like, oh, my goodness. Okay.
I said, I appreciate the support of both the council and the community. I, it's, it's actually been an enjoyable three years and despite everything that's happened socially.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, roll call vote.
Schroder.
Hi.
Scott. Swales.
Hi.
Gunn.
Hi.
More.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. Are there any other questions for Steve Ballard? Tonight? Okay, we'll go on to the clerk report. You had some other things. I don't know. Was there anything else you wanted to add, Mike?
Not, I don't think so. I, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for getting all that paperwork out. That was very nice. Thank you. City treasurer, so Lori submitted her reports and the warrants tonight. And then did everyone have a chance to see the updated warrants that she sent? Did anyone need her to go over those updated ones? No? Are there any additions or corrections from that? Lori, I just wanted you to, did you want to make a comment?
No.
Okay, well.
I have nothing.
Well, I wanted to make a comment because there were three council members that didn't have their, they weren't listed as getting quarterly money and it was just a paperwork thing, right? Okay, so they'll, they'll get paid at the next time. Okay, so.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any objection to pay in the bills? Hearing none? The warrants will be paid by unanimous consent. Thank you. Any questions for Lori? Okay, we'll go on to the chief's report. Chief, did you want to?
Yes, given where we are in the meeting and time, the only item I'd like to highlight is understaffing and part-time staff. Adam Schmierbach, an Iowa City officer who worked with me and, and resigned for, for personal reasons in the pursuit of a career in construction about a year ago, approached me about joining University Heights Police Department as a part-time officer. Again, our part-time officers are as needed and to fill in staffing shortages. Adam would be a great addition to the department. Again, he has that maturity that, that I've, I've strived to try to bring on to the department. So he was sworn in on Friday by Mike. You will see him. He's about my build, a few inches taller, reddish hair. But again, Adam Schmierbach, if you see him, say hi to him. And thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief tonight about his report or anything else? Okay. Steph, did you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, good. We'll move on to streets and sidewalks. Josiah and Doug. And I know Josiah was gonna report on Iman.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, a couple items. So the two big ones in my mind, we've been tracking for a number of months here, is this fiber to home build out. We've got Iman and MetroNet that have submitted plans and started down this process. So tonight, we do not have any action items tonight for the council to approve official work for either one. I submitted a written report and you can see in there, we've reviewed a number of plans with Iman and MetroNet. Met with Iman most recently yesterday afternoon to basically go over their plans and, you know, come up with a number of comments that we'd like him to just, just nail down exactly what they're doing and where. And we did get a resubmital this morning. So we just started to go over those this afternoon. I included in my written report some comments from Iman that they wanted to pass along to the council on the residents are, they're planning to serve in University Heights. They did indicate that once they get going, it's approximately a four-week construction window. They do have a general contractor in place for that work. And reiterated again, I think in the same manner that Iman and MetroNet have communicated to the council in the past that they would be in continuous communication with residents once they start building. So that's Iman. I'm hopeful that, and I guess MetroNet similarly, we're waiting for follow-up on them on some details of where exactly they're going to be placing conduits and boxes at a couple locations in the cities right away. I'm hopeful that both companies would have everything squared away so that they can be on the May tenth agenda. The only other two items I had, we had talked about the Finkbine Golf Course development and how those, that development's gonna impact Melrose. You may recall that I think it's about six weeks ago, towards the end of February, we had quite a few meetings with the city of Iowa City and some others. I've checked with the Iowa, with the city of Iowa City Engineering Department, and they're still awaiting resubmital of plans to address those comments. So no, nothing new this month. And then lastly, I had a note there, we're, we're doing some storm sewer investigation work on, on Melrose here this week to try and identify a sinkhole over a storm sewer that the city has some storm sewer easements to collect that water. So more to come on that, but that's something that just came up at the end of last week. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions for Josiah? Thank you. Doug, did you have anything to add tonight?
Not, not really too much, other than I'm still looking for any potholes. Have you heard of anything or maybe Chief, if some of your staff happens to notice any potholes around the city area, we could get ahold of.
Yeah, that's right. I was gonna call Russ. You put that on your list, the top of Monroe Street.
Top of Monroe.
He fills them every year. And he also checks coming down Highland. And I think those are pretty good, but it's just the area that he usually fills.
Yeah. I got a couple here at the end of my street, too, in Masque Court.
I know.
That reminds me, I talked to Russ as well today and we're gonna, we're gonna order some street signs. There's some street signs missing. And so it reminded me, Troy, I don't know if you have any, any others, but Russ is gonna take a look around and see how we're doing on street signs and we'll put together an order, try and get a new round of signs up.
Okay, I have provided on the list as we've noticed them, but I'll make sure that that's updated and that he has it. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Anything else? I think any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move to building zoning sanitation. Tim, did you have anything tonight?
Nothing from me.
Okay, we'll go to eGovernment. Lisa, you sent out a report.
I did. I'll just mention that, um, leak vacuuming is April eighteenth now. It had to be changed at the contractor's suggestion. Um, and then April twenty-third is cleanup day. My favorite event with the dumpster.
It really is. She's not being sarcastic. She loves it.
I do. The dumpster's on Marietta and even if you don't have anything to drop off, you can come check out the Too Good To Throw Away.
I think Mike named that, didn't he? That's a cute name, but anyway.
I did.
Yeah, Too Good To Throw Away table or, you know, on the table. Thank you. Uh, we'll go on to announcements and I, I didn't say this, but Troy and I have been working on a farmer's market and we're not quite ready, right, Troy, to announce anything, but we're really close and probably something will be on the website before we say something, hopefully by the twenty-sixth of, um, of, uh, this month. And also, um, the Iowa City Public Library Bookmobile was gonna be on Tuesdays on Paul Moore's lot and then the supervisor says we can't be on gravel because of the uh, wheelchair accessible. And so it's not confirmed, but it looks like it's gonna be in front of, on Melrose on the lane that's right in front of the old city office, the Stella and the uh, Dennis office right in there on Tuesdays from four to four-thirty. And uh, so it's not one hundred percent confirmed, but, uh, we're getting close to that too. So I thought I'd mention that. And are there any other announcements by anyone? Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone, for your time.